Thank you.
Mr. Furl, would you please say your name?
My name is Raskin. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of the United States of America, with the very essence of our Constitution, under God, in the name of the Lord, and in the name of the people.
Okay, our first order of business would be to approve the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have two sets of minutes, one from our special meeting on the 21st, one from our regular meeting on the 26th. We also have a purchasing policy protocol prepared by the finance officer, and we have to set a public hearing for June 22nd for reapproval of the Chatham Park master plan. Any changes to the consent agenda?
I don't have a change, but I have a comment.
Okay.
And the purchasing protocol, the second sentence says, "When used properly with common sense." I want to log that statement. I think too frequently we try to enact protocols that try to program out good judgment and common sense, and I'm glad to hear that we are not attempting to do that and embracing the qualities of common sense. With that, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
All in favor? I oppose. There are none being opposed. Items 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the consent agenda are approved. Need to approve the remainder of the agenda. I understand there is one change. Got an email from the clerk indicating that the applicant for old business number three, had a family emergency of some kind, cannot be here tonight, and has asked that we remove that from the agenda tonight and have it on a, on some undetermined future meetings of the strike item three. Any other recommended changes to the agenda as presented? Not prepare a motion to approve the agenda with the striking of old business number three.
Second?
All in favor?
I have.
Opposed? No opposed. The agenda as amended is approved. Go into sets of matters or no. Of course, no matter if there are no, nobody signed up for sets of matters. Okay. Bring us to old business number one, annexation request from the Chatham Park.
I think you have, you have the information before you go to this meeting and then during the public hearing, you recall that the certification of the property, plus the property of 29 acres, 29.29 acres of property, where currently it is, there's a medical office building and a hospice building contemplated for construction. We had some discussion at the last meeting also, the meeting before that, we reset the public hearing with regard to the possibility of discussing impacts from the annexation staff subsequently prepared in a memorandum which demonstrated based on the information that we could glean from current property values as well as anticipated development, what we expect as far as revenues go, and then also provided an overview of what we would expect our initial impacts to be. And the public hearing was held at the last meeting, essentially with no discussion. And so, for you this evening, reporting request for the annexation, any submit map your comment. If you choose, you would adopt your consent town boundaries around 29.29 acres, or I guess provide direction otherwise. With that, I will open up my next question.
Okay, start a discussion period. I will, I'll begin by saying that I'm going to try and persuade the board to not annex this property tonight, and I'll explain why. If others would like to speak first, you're certain of wanting to do so. If you want me to explain my rationale, I can do that first.
Please.
Okay. First of all, I appreciate the manager's respects efforts in trying to quantify the fiscal impacts. I think that's a very good first step in the right direction. I think all these annexation decisions should be business decisions based on whether or not the action will be revenue positive, revenue neutral, or revenue negative. So I think this is, like I said, a good first step going forward. I would, I would encourage the staff to carry this economic analysis at least one step farther and have a finding, a closing sentence that finds whether the action is indeed revenue neutral, positive, or negative. Based on what the manager did present, I've come to the conclusion that it will be revenue negative, and I'll tell you my rationale. First, we look at property taxes. Whatever those property taxes will be, they'll be 100% offset by a reduction of the annual fee that we are collecting from Chatham Park investors. So off the run of the bat, there is zero revenue gain from, from taxes associated with this annexation for the general fund. With respect to expenses for the general fund, we can expect, it's hard to quantify based on the analysis we got, what those expenses will be, but there will be some finite number being associated with snow, wind, and blow, or increased fees for fire protection since our footprint is increasing, perhaps other, just other services from public works to the area. While police services are probably negligible, there's some undetermined amount of municipal services will have to be administered to the area without any increase in tax revenues because the tax revenues are totally offset by the deduction that personal development will enjoy once we start receiving the taxes. So with respect to taxes, it's revenue negative. With respect to utilities, as soon as we annex this area, any water and sewer customers under that footprint will have their utility bills cut half. So it is revenue negative on the enterprise fund side by 50%. Well, any revenues we might have approved from water and sewer fees, water and sewer charges for usage will be half what it would be if it was left in the ETJ until such time as an economic analysis can show that either the properties have been further developed, actually have buildings on them, or it comes, comes in with a larger proposal for annexation that where the $300,000 precedent development is not totally offset. At that point, perhaps the staff could forward an argument that showed that the provision of those for annexation was indeed revenue positive in other words, not placing a burden on taxpayers to support precedent developments, you know, goals for development and property. So that's my rationale of why, and I think going forward, I think it'd be a really bad precedent to set. Admittedly, the impacts of these four or five lots are probably measured in hundreds of dollars, two thousands of dollars at the most. But going forward, we're going to do this, you know, hundreds if not thousands of times over the next 10 to 20 years. If we set the precedent now, that we're going to annex properties, and we're going to expect the taxpayers, current citizens, to bear some tax burden or utility fee burden to support those annexations. I think that's a, that's not a policy that I think may have some support. So that's my rationale. Have any questions about that line of logic?
May I ask, are any benefits to annexing now to the building and construction needed?
I don't, I don't see any. I think, I think the correct thing to do here is to return the application to the applicant and ask them to resubmit probably a year or at such time when economic analysis indicates that tax revenues more than offset the additional costs that be associated with the, with the annexation action.
Just so I understand, how you're figuring your negative, the agreement that we receive, you are correct in the agreement that we receive taxes, adware and taxes, offset anything that we receive in the agreement. But we receive tax revenue, and we don't receive any money in the agreement. So we're still receiving revenue on this. It's not as if we're foregoing any revenue by annexing the property. So I'm not really clear, and maybe I misunderstood, but we're receiving adware and taxes. However, this was calculated. We're not receiving, the only difference is, is we're not receiving that figure in the scope of the agreement. And if I could just, one more other comment, too. With the same, the same rationale being used as far as the, as far as the water and sewer collections are concerned, I think what you want to say is that if we were to extend water and sewer into that area, and the applicant developed the property and became water and sewer customers, that they would actually be twice this amount rather than this amount. So we're getting essentially this amount. We're just not getting twice this amount, yet theoretically we didn't annex them. Is that a fair reading of what I think you were trying to say?
Well, I'm just saying that the water and sewer charges in ETJ are double what they are in town. So if we annex it, we cut our revenues in half for water and sewer fees.
Okay. I, and maybe I misunderstood because I thought I heard you saying that these would be, these would be cut in half, and actually what we would be doing if we did annex would be doubling these. So maybe just need to carry on.
Could I just interject also? Taxes are in perpetuity, forever. The $300,000 is very limited, and it will go away, maybe sooner rather than later, but it will go away. And taxes are what's going to be here forever. This is at least $2.9 million worth of property without even being built on it. And it couldn't be as much as $6 million when the buildings are built.
Well, I'm not suggesting we never annex it. I'm suggesting we not annex it when it's, when it's a-
But you cannot involuntarily annex it. You take it when it's offered, or you don't take it. They are required under the master plan to offer it. They're not required to do it. It's up to the town to do it.
Well, perhaps that would take some more research, but I think under the terms of the agreement, we could ask the applicant to resubmit, you know, in six months or a year, wherever we think it's appropriate.
What's going to be different in six months?
I don't know. There'd be more buildings out there. Perhaps the tax picture would be, maybe we'll get to the $300,000 threshold so that there would be income, tax income over and above that.
Well, if there are no buildings, there are no services.
For me?
There are no buildings, there are no services being delivered. So it's not costing you anything.
They're a small amount of services, not zero services. If you sell a big a plot, still on the revenue.
Well, if there's no road there, and if they don't annex it, they don't develop it, then there's not going to be any need for town services.
I guess that would need to be cleared, too, if I may, as far as what the board would be directing in terms of future policy, or are we then looking to extend water and sewer to properties that aren't currently in the town corporate limits? And that's kind of a departure from what I understood previous town policy to be. It's certainly contrary to what the previously through the master plan held for Chatham Park properties. So in essence, what we would be doing is sitting fallow until, I guess I'm not quite sure. I would, I would need to be a little bit more clear with what the board's direction would be, especially in terms of future annexation policies are concerned.
The next item on your agenda is the hospice facility. If that, that's part of the 29 acres. If you don't annex it, how are you going to extend public water and public sewer to that facility? Because your policy in the past has been you don't extend public sewer unless it's in town.
Is the developer not going to do that work if the developers do all the utilities extended?
The developer's doing the work, but it's up to you to flip the switch and say it's public sewer. It's available to that property. It's already town, it's not there.
As far as the annexation goes, the voluntary annexation relieves the town of the obligation to provide those water and sewer services.
Certainly.
Whereas the voluntary annexation commits the developer to provide for that infrastructure, and the town will gain the benefit of that infrastructure, the value of that infrastructure. The master plan requires, and requires, there was a request, there was an agreement that upon submission of subdivision and site plans for the property within the master plan, or within the, yeah, the master plan, that the applicant make a voluntary request for annexation. That was in lieu of annexing the entire 7,000 acres at one time. That was a much better, cost-effective way to do it for everybody's concern, for them to come in as they develop and make the request. As far as a deduct or a wash with 300,000, 300,000 is there to provide the town, to mitigate the town's impact on its general fund and, well, the general fund for the additional costs associated with reviewing development and improving the development. So the fact that the taxes will be deducted from that is not a net deduct in any way, I don't think. And on top of that, I think that we've already allocated sewer to this property. And I think it was with the intent that, yes, annexation would occur, and the facilities will be constructed, and to suggest now that, you know, we've asked them to make this investment, to change our minds, I think, would be inappropriate.
I don't think we've changed our mind. We've never been asked to annex this before. This is the first time it's come before us. And I do disagree with your characterization that there's no negative impact with the offset from the $300,000. You know, for every dollar in taxes we collect, we lose a dollar from that $300,000 payment. Furthermore, that $300,000 has already been spent. We authorized the manager to hire an assistant planner, an engineering inspector, and an administrative assistant, and to use some of that money for doing, planning related consultant activities around the, our new planning ordinance. So there will be a cost, over and above what revenues we collect to fiscal taxpayers in terms of either it'll, it'll have to be paid for by some incremental small tax increase or by invading fund balance, and/or, and some incremental increase in water and sewer rates. And you all have authority to do that. If you want to subsidize and underwrite precedent developments, bottom line, that's fine. You have the authority to do that. But I think you should at least be transparent in that's what we're doing. And you should be able to quantify the extent to which we're subsidizing precedent developments, bottom line, be able to quantify what the, even how, however small they are, what are the tax implications? What are the water and sewer rate increase implications that are associated with the decision to do that?
Well, if we believe most studies, not the least of which is our local EDC's analysis, they will tell you that commercial development is revenue positive, residential development is revenue negative, and industrial is, is the greatest revenue generator. These being pretty substantial commercial developments, I think, my expectation is it's revenue positive based on manager's analysis.
Yeah, I guess I would need, and I'm not, you know, heck, I'm not wrong, I'll be wrong before the end of the night, but I'm trying to understand, I guess, where we're coming out revenue negative with this. Because we're not losing that tax revenue, as Mr. Massey indicated, we're gaining that on an annual basis.
In the past, what has been our policy?
We'll lose the water rate anyway if they don't develop.
At what point have we annexed properties in the past? At what point in the development process have we annexed?
The other half of this property's already been annexed. That's where the medical office building is. You did that two years ago.
What you're saying, Mr. Terry, could you clarify that a little more when you were saying that you think that the taxpayers will be subsidizing Chatham Park? I don't, I'm really confused by that.
Well, I think they absolutely will. You know, if we, let's say if we collect $10,000 in taxes based on this annexation action, we're also going to lose $10,000 from the $300,000 fee that precedent development pays us. That all is primarily general fund dollars. So it's a wash. Gain a dollar, lose a dollar. So that's the tax, the tax revenues associated with this are zero. To the, to you get past that $300,000 threshold of their, of their payment. The expenses are unknown at this time, but there is going to be some finite expenses, although it may be for providing services in that area. You know, the fire department's going to ask for a bigger share. They're going to increase our share and decrease the county's share next year. John Poteet's going to have to go out there and plow snow and spend town staff time, if you will. It may be, like I said before, on these little six lots, it's not going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. But again, it's about precedent going forward. You know, when do you pull the trigger on annexation? In my experience and training and education, you don't annex a property that's right revenue negative. You don't set that as a precedent going forward. Again, this is, this is six lots. We're looking at 22,000 houses and 22 million square feet of, if you extrapolate that forward, and you're willing to annex, annex properties before they are revenue positive, you know, I hate to think what the burden on taxpayers will be in terms of, you know, tax increases and water and sewer rate increases if we continue to, if this, if this becomes our policy, to annex properties before they pay for themselves, then that's going to be a very expensive policy going forward. Not on this little six lot parcel, but, you know, I think, I think our, since we're doing this, let's, let's be candid, we haven't done a lot of this. And like much of Chatham Park, we're making it up as we go along here, and I don't apologize for that. It's, we've never been done in North Carolina, so making it up as we go along is maybe the best we can do. But I think we need to spend some more time thinking about the implications of this annexation in the future. Let's give the manager, finance officer, some time to do some more research into what sort of economic analysis other municipalities do around annexations of this type. I know there are models out there for more detailed economic analysis around annexations that do as a bottom line arrive at a conclusion whether they're revenue negative, positive, or neutral. And maybe we just need some more time to, for the finance officer, manager, consult with their peers, find in, find somebody who has a, a model that produces that work and defer this decision until we're comfortable. We're not doing this on the, the way this, this financial burden on the backs of our, our current taxpayers.
Mr. May, I know that this is based upon a model that was used in North Carolina and other municipalities, because I purchased it to Screwsback, and he, the recommendation here is that it's a positive thing. He indicates that there's $72,000 in taxes going to be collected from this property forever. And that's incredible to me, that there's, there's not going to be a significant cost to this. Commercial development is not going to cost you very much compared to residential development. This is not a $10,000 deal. This is beings and beings of ours.
Well, I hear what you're saying, and that, that will be true someday when we get past the $300,000 threshold. And, and that's not going to take very long, just to think about it. I know that-
We don't annex it, even will take a long time.
Yeah. Well, think about this for a minute. I know probably one house doesn't have $1,000 worth of taxes associated, but maybe that's 500. So how long will it take us to get to the $300,000 threshold? The precedent development builds their, not their 300th house, but their 600th house. The tax offset will have been fully amortized, and we'll not be getting any further. So any further subsidization of precedent development, we'll have, we'll still have 21,000 houses to build and 22 million square feet of commercial space to build without any support from precedent development. And then at that point, the grand development offset becomes a moot point, and all the tax revenue will be, you know, that will just will come to the town. And that shouldn't take very long. I mean, if of the 22,000 houses, 22 million square feet, all they got to do is build the first thousand houses before they no longer pay us anything, then we're going to talk about a long time, about a couple of years.
Well, in my experience with annexation, and conversely, and not annexing, what happens when you have development outside of corporate, of a town or city's corporate boundaries, development takes place, very rarely will you have development come into corporate boundaries, because essentially they're receiving the services, and they're receiving all of the benefits without paying the taxes. And in most ways, that value is more easily marketed to people that want to purchase the property. I mean, they have a lot, they have less of an annual adware and tax burden. And then it becomes a fight of, you know, then, then as towns and the cities become caretakers, because there aren't any opportunities for growth, we become landlocked. And we see also City of Detroit, and even some places in North Carolina, I guess, for that pattern, where when you become landlocked, you have no opportunity for growth and development. And frankly, the people outside of those areas aren't in a hurry to become city or town residents. Then that tax revenue never, that tax revenue never actually gets enjoyed by the city. And, and I'll say again, I mean, I'm not really sure how we're losing, I'm not really sure how we're losing any tax revenue when we're obviously gaining tax revenue regardless of, regardless of how the agreement is structured. We're gaining adware and tax revenue on an annual basis. I think that figure that you see right there is based on only development of the five properties, and we give it simple land values for the balance of it. So I think it's actually, once that, once that 29 acres develops out, it's going to be significantly more than that. My main point was, is that, is to go out of these impacts, it is admittedly a little bit more difficult to determine when we don't have a clue, solid, I guess, direction, I should say, on, on what the balance of that property will, how the balance of that property will be developed, though I think that, that we'll have that information forthcoming in the very near future if we're able to get the ball positively rolling, and that's... But, you know, there again, I mean, we, we're gaining revenue, we're not losing revenue. And I think in terms of how we would, how we've handled this in the past, and in my experience, I mean, the only time I've ever come back and annexed property that needed to be, that was already developed, was when there was, it was either, I want to say, what I would term a hostile annexation, where the town is simply coming back and trying to square up its borders, and any more of that's litigious, increasingly so in North Carolina. Or when there was some unique service that needed to be provided, but the instances of coming back and annexing developed properties is very rare. I know this board elected to do that with the school, and I think that was somewhat of a unique situation. But, I mean, that, that is more or less a convoluted way to do it after annexation. I mean, I think coming into it, we can get a pretty good idea, albeit an estimate, of what kind of revenue we're expecting to get. And that's what we tried to present to you. And a detailed annexation impact study wouldn't give you much more of an impact as far as revenues than what you've seen in that paragraph right there. They're going to give you a little bit more detail as far as what your unit, what your unit cost is. You know, for instance, if you- You know, for instance, if you increase population by a certain, by a certain amount, then your unit cost is going to go up, for instance, to provide, or to provide police per cabinet or something to that effect. A more detailed analysis will get into that. In this case, with 29 acres, I think this is a fairly straightforward exercise, given the information that we have. But I think, I, you know, going all the way back to square one, and like I said at that previous meeting, I, I think it's, you know, I think it's great to have this type of an exercise from the staff bubble, and a staff perspective. I, I think we have to do that in the future. And I think that's a great move on the mayor's part. I'm just not so sure that I understand where some of these negative impacts are coming from, in this case.
Well, I think I've articulated my objections as clearly as I can, and I don't want to belabor it, so if there are questions, I'll answer them. Otherwise, we can hear from other board members.
I don't have any questions or anything, but I do like to say that, you know, with this voluntary annexation, you know, we are, we're taking advantage of the water and sewer being provided by the developer. And it looks like the 29 acres of woodland right now, we're getting taxed minus the five acres. I think that's a, a win for the, for the town. Because I don't, we're not going to have services out there in, in woodland. I mean, that would be forest service if it caught on fire, and if it fired upon. But I'm just saying, I don't think we're going to have a lot of services that's going to cost the town at this time.
I have a question about the water, Mr. Terry. As you were saying that, I mean, there's no water service now, and you were saying that at some point it would be cut down.
Well, if, if you leave it in the ETJ, and the buildings, get their certificate of occupancy, and they start their operations, their water bill will be charged at the out-of-town rate until such time as the property got annexed. And then, after annexation, you know, that would be part of the calculation, you know, do you annex or don't annex? When you bring them into the city, you cut their charge to the town.
I think he's, he's trying to say that, that that would be double the figures there. We would essentially be charging, yet we could double those figures there, because they would be, be charged at out-of-town rate, which is two times what the in-town rate is.
But then, if we don't go forward with the annexation, of course, later on, after these buildings are up, there's a possibility that they may say, no, we don't want you to annex it, and it just provides us those services. But to me, I think we-
Yeah, I would be fine with that.
I would not be fine with that.
I would be fine with a chapel ridge model, where we sold both water and Preston Development, and let them run their own satellites and our plan, that they won't go up there.
I would not be fine with that, because you've got commercial property out there, so, and you can get money from commercial property where it's chateau, chapel ridge. They're not, they wouldn't be, other than the water.
Yeah, also, there's going to be natural water customers anyway, and that's going to raise the water revenue. Yep.
I think it's all timing. I mean, I, to me, calls would not be significant in this case, and I'm actually in favor of annexation. But I do think Mr. Terry is correct in the sense that we need to have a policy going forward, because there is a point, like you said, it's an exciting argument, he makes it about the, the water revenue. And so there, there has to be a point where super towns advantage and vice versa. I don't know if there's a way to create a policy, where we look at that and see what is in the best interest of the town going forward, because there is going to be tremendous growth, and what might not seem like a lot now is going to be considerably more in terms of quality. So I think it's worth looking at this in the future and coming up with, you know, an analysis about when is the best time, and it's like this formula, but it'd be, but it's been out a bit more, but I like this. I mean, I think it's compelling to me that it should be.
Well, I don't think the water, doubling the water sewer rates could come close to the revenue that will be generated by the adblocker and taxes. And those dollars are restricted to the enterprise fund, whereas adblocker and taxes are for general use at the town's discretion.
We've been getting that figured out.
Yeah, well, we think about the 300,000 as adblocker and taxes without services, which is somewhat of what I think about it as, is it's basically saying we're prepaying adblocker and taxes even though we don't get any services from the town. So, in exchange, we'll give, we'll provide the town $300,000 a year, and as we develop, deduct that amount, because now you're gaining that revenue from adblocker and taxes that you can use for general purposes.
Which is not really going to be a gain in the case of this revenue being doubled.
But if we think that 300,000 is already a gain, which I think it is, because otherwise we'd be spending general fund dollars for all of these activities in association with Chatham Park, such as all the development, all the engineering, all the planning, all the legal fees, all for reviewing the plans, the additional elements for crafting the development agreement, all those things, we would be spending adblocker and tax dollars to accomplish, to provide the staff to do that. $300,000 a year is coming in addition to our adblocker and taxes. It's then going to be depleted or deducted as development occurs, which is just replacing those dollars. So it's a payment forward, really.
I'm concerned about, I think there's definitely a risk to provide water sewer services now when we don't have the annexation, that's easy as well.
Yeah, in response to Commissioner Figg's comment there, I, I don't see the 300,000 dollars as additional revenue. I see that as Chatham Park keeping their promise that they would not cause the taxpayers of Pittsburgh to incur additional expenses to, for the administrative over and processing their, their development applications, site plans, and whatnot, you know. So that's, that's just them keeping their promise that, that work wouldn't be done on the back of the Pittsburgh taxpayers. That's already spent, like I said, you've spent it on three positions, a UDO and another consulting one. Well, again, I've, I've been heard, satisfied with my points of understanding, the labor of y'all.
Appreciate you sharing this reason. I think we need to have policy focused on this, and I think we, we do need a, a potential policy about how, with annexation, how we need to do.
Well, I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance to extend the corporate limits of town of Pittsburgh for case A dash 2015 dash 02.
Have you made that a part of the motion that we, that we, of course, they're coming up with a policy that we-
I don't think so. I think it should be separate.
Yeah, yeah. Because I think that's-
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Opposed, the annexation passes. Site plan review, item number two, is the site plan review for Chatham Hospice Facility.
Hi, you have before you this evening the request from, request with regard to the Chatham Park Hospice Facility. It's located in the area that we, that we were just discussing. Now, it's proposing to construct a 11,000 square foot building to use the hospice. We have the applicant here. Also, Fred Royal has, has provided some review and has some more review than we, that's required before we can fully satisfy, I think, the issuance of, go ahead, but, planning board reviewed and recommended approval at the June 1st meeting. Recommendation here is for approval subject to issuance of the stormwater permit and authorization from the town engineer. Mr. Royal, you have any comments about the site?
I'll have a question. And we also have the applicant here this evening as well, and I can indulge me if we need to look this in your eyes, and I can get those on as well.
Any questions for board members? I only had one question for the applicant. On a couple of sheets that you'll refer around utilities and stormwater, there's notations pointing to the utility infrastructure that say to be installed by others, fortified to be installed by others, parlayed, installed by others. Assuming that that, what that means is that these plans are meant to go to a general contractor to build the facility, and that that contractor's not going to do the site work or the infrastructure installation, somebody else is going to do that. So that's not, you know, the others isn't called out here, but is there another set of plans that's going to-
You are not the others.
Yeah. But there's, is there a separate set of plans, just with utility detail, that's going to the site?
Yes, there is. There's another set of plans. They're going to be the, basically the Grand Drive and Freedom Parkway extension. So basically, what is currently constructed, now, up over the, I'll save you the whole here. It's wired up here. So basically, what we've got here now is currently in the area, kind of right there, where you've got more filling up right now. Currently, this is the first M O B site right here.
Okay.
So that's the first M O B site. This drive is already in. They're now working on this drive here, which is going to be an extension from Grand Drive, which is Sow's Drive right down here, and the extension from Freedom Parkway to come up, extended up to the hospice site. There is another set of plans that are out there that mean at the same time as those plants there that were done for these roadways, and so-
I think we just approve the preliminary plan.
And it's also the building itself, we're doing this utility, not two, yes, that's what I'm suggesting. I think that may be the other, the other one, I'm not saying I think it's, the building is being built by, by, by the utility.
Certainly.
Is this one, Mr. Cooper, is that going to be the only entrance into the hospice off around tree, the being a back entrance into rusher running that- It will not, it will hardly be under swing in this area. Actually, in front of it here, let's say that this area is a transition between the hospice and so, so a lot of trees and stuff in there. Now, we are looking at sparring off of this in the future, and developing into this track, so there'll be loops going to be created in here. But right now, this would be the central access point. Wide enough, though, that you could have a quake down something in the block here.
And that also suggests a future connection to the traffic circle.
Yes, sir. This is a separate permit, a separate proposal working on the cross circle.
So conceptually, that is the second.
Yes. I mean, this, this is, I, this, right now, it's one here, we have to make connections off of this, this area, and one out to the end here, but yes, the, so the road map will have to come up.
Yeah, and there'll be improvements along here, but like Phil said, they're, they're basically coming in here now, and we're looking at doing a permanent, probably a crossing right now, turning them either, but there will be another road that will end up off of here, which is rest of, people are tied right there. Currently, right now, there is water coming up from Sow's down here, which is tied off of, we're looking at-
All the water being moved.
Yeah, so everything will be moved, so the water line comes up currently here, and it actually, I believe, extends to here right now. And then it will be extended further in here, so that they can't extend the water services to the hospice site. The ground, the sewer right now, currently, as you know, the sewer is coming up, and it's already installed in here, so there will be a service off of this sewer line right here coming into the hospice site. The sewer, the sewer line is built with, with-
And that water loop is going to be put in at the same time with that road extension to the traffic circle, I assume?
That's right.
Is there a timeframe, an estimate on that?
Very soon, but we're down to the final, 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 for the water.
For the stream crossing? Got it.
So it's a small underground, it's not, but, if I do have to, the amount of impacts of that, probably just a month.
Mr. Royal, are you seeing the utility plans that we're not seeing to that? I mean, there's a whole different set of plans, right, for the utility contractors and the road infrastructure guys, there-
Are you referring to the site, hospice site versus the road?
Yeah, hospice site in particular. I mean, I guess I'm trying to get around this, get my arrows around these notes, and say, are sewer utilities installed by others, and that doesn't seem to be the P D L area. So are you seeing sets of plans that relate to this, or are you checking off on those?
I, I have not checked utilities on the last set, but I know that Hydrostructures has.
Okay.
And the only question I'm aware of was the reclaimed water line coming down, what's the name of that road? Yeah. That was the only question, I think, that was outstanding, as far as I'm aware of.
The reclaimed water line, and, and for this project?
Mm-hmm.
Where would that reclaim water go?
It's, it's a dry line that's going to be used in the future for irrigation at hospice, was the, the-
So it's an anticipation of some future availability?
Right. The same is occurring at M O B one.
So this, the water line, obviously in the public roadways, will be public, but then this driveway, I think, is private, and it's a public-
Yes, I think so. It's public. Up to the property line.
Okay. Because I didn't see the plan indicate, I didn't, I don't recall it saying this is within public right of way. Because one of my questions is that it's straddling a property line, therefore, where is the easement for accessing utilities? But you're now telling me that it's a public right of way, because it's not drawn that way. It's got a property line going right down the center of the drive aisle, or the driveway. So I hadn't, I did not realize that was to be a public roadway.
On the preliminary plan that you wrote through, it was a public roadway.
This particular piece of road?
Yes, it is. The cover.
It was brindling, no one wanted to do it.
And why would this plan not reflect that right of way?
The student that you're preparing for, during this?
That's one town.
So, it's current site.
So there's a subsequent version of the site plan to this then?
If there's a discrepancy, it's not in the site, it's in the property lines, and associated with that road. And the road, the final rendition of that road, or revision of that road, is what's in the construction plan for the subdivision up to the property. And the dedications are right of way in there. And the time when this property started, it was still anticipated to be a private road.
Yeah.
It just was one, so, classic, it's on the public.
Is there a public turnaround at the end of that roadway? Or does it just require access entering the site and going around the park line?
The latest plan sets dated, it's sometime like, way beyond February 12th.
Oh.
We have another fresh set that we reviewed about a week ago, I think. What, I mean, what you're looking at might not be the latest for utilities.
Well, probably not the site plan either, because the property lines are different.
Yeah.
This, now, this driveway going-
Free to walk, yes.
No, the drive, what I'm calling a drive, going, I don't-
Straight.
Yeah.
Which, and this site plan shows it with a property line down below it. So, okay. But what I hear you saying is that this is not, the site plan we're looking at tonight is not the one you want to get approved. Because we are-
The one you're looking at, I don't know if that one that you're looking at is the one that is in review with taxes. I don't know. I mean, we're pulling that up, we're pulling that up from pretty big news.
Okay. So staff has not completed their review of this plan?
I think Stuart's last memo about this was contingent upon a couple of comments on utilities, which I can't be 100% certain we got all of those back. The only one I remember was the reclaimed water line was not shown. That's something I'll figure back and look at in the morning.
Well, I've got several other comments I'd like to get out there. And I'm looking at the service area, and how the, it looks to me like a very difficult place for the refuse and recycling vehicles to actually maneuver to collect the refuse and recycling. So I don't know if you've got special vehicles, the fact that this is a hospice, that there's a special arrangement for collection, but just my eyeball looking at the way the driveway is configured, it doesn't seem to be a whole lot of room for a truck to get in and turn around, collect its load, and then turn around and get back out. So it just, that's something I'm looking at. Are there arrangements, is there another arrangement that's already established that doesn't require waste industries coming in there yet?
It's been a while since I've been involved in this, I know that would be, I should look at very carefully, I don't know if, my understanding is to just carefully look at, because it says not all the requirements necessarily, if you're understanding, but again, I don't know.
I can, from our standpoint, you asked the engineer that exact question, Mike, I have the same observation you do, and they put turning implements on it instead of metal requirements.
Okay, okay. So the truck can turn around and then back out?
Well, it's not, it's going to back out, it's not going to turn around in that service area, it's going to pick up the trash and then back out until it gets back to that.
You can have a happy truck driver.
Yes, you are.
I can tell you that solid waste service truck driver wouldn't like to back out, he really don't like to back out if he has trucks.
Right.
Mr. Rose pointed out that the hammerhead down on the bottom is installed, so the truck driver couldn't turn around. It's possible.
That's the most of it. Point to go back in there, turn around, get out, such a, a lot of, a lot of...
We've got to look at, I mean, that's a, that's a rather large area back there. You know, the radius is, is showing it there. The radius, the fact aside, it's a dumpster truck without a wheel. Like I said, it was, Mr. Smith here, he pointed out, they asked the question, they were proving to be...
That drive aisle is twice as wide as a truck, so he's got the ability to back all the way back out until he gets a main, and then back up towards the entrance of the building and be hit and shoot down.
Yeah, I doubt he wants to make, do that.
I doubt he wants to do it that way either.
I'm sure he wants to turn around there, head on out.
Do they turn around if they think that the doctor's going to the right?
The planned movement is to go that way.
Yeah.
Come out.
It's possible. I, I know, you don't want, you don't want them co-mingling. Well, I think, you know, definitely take a hard look at that.
Right, I don't like that idea of the truck backing up at all. I don't like that, in a hospice facility or any other facility, I don't like that.
Not to, I agree with you, but a lot of these guys that come in, they, they come in to early, early morning hours and pick up trash, there's very little trash. I know that's the way it is.
It's like that one area, what other purpose would that have, other than to turn around?
Some cars will be parked there when they're temporarily repairing something, or, so you could get the situation where he's...
Okay.
This is one that's been driven by the architects, or where they wanted to put the building in, and you see MHA works on this, it's a labor mix. There's a driving force on how this building gets positioned, and when issues came up like that, we said, we've got to prove that it works.
Didn't make the observation that you get this S turn here, that it's going to be difficult to negotiate, going backwards, it could be, it could be heated just by taking that, this out, and, 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 and,[1358.81]
Yeah, if it's constructed correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, we've got wetlands to deal with. We have sewer easement to deal with. It's a pretty tight spot.
Yeah.
So.
Is there a nutrient buy-down component to this?
So far, there's not, um.
Will that?
I don't remember what the JSLAT number is.
Okay.
I, I haven't, like I said, I haven't looked at this in probably four days or five days.
Okay. So that's something that would be refined or analyzed when you do the permit?
Exactly.
Um, mentioned, you mentioned the sewer and the, yeah, coming around there. And the plan that I have has the sewer easement basically underneath the dam. And it has the sewer line probably two or three feet off of the toe of the slope of the dam. And it's called future sewer. So I don't know if that dam is gonna be constructed and then the sewer excavated back through the dam. And therefore conceivably jeopardize the integrity of the dam. Or if the sewer's gonna be in the ground first, dam's gonna be built on top of it. And if town taking possession of this public utility then has to go excavate.
Yeah.
For that sewer is gonna be into the dam.
They're not gonna be on the sewer. I had them come off the sewer for my first round of comments, but honestly, I, I have to look at everything again.
Yeah, 'cause the.
They, they did a lot of revisions.
Okay, 'cause I, I don't, yeah, already dated February twelfth.
Twelfth, yeah. So that's round one out of three rounds.
Okay.
I'm not sure why you have that.
I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
What is the plan that you've got the hard copies of, that?
May eighteenth. Well, that's on one of the sheets and.
This one's dated October two thousand fourteen.
They got a revision date here. Yeah, it says May eighteen on sheet C three oh, three hundred. Okay, yeah, we're, we're looking at a, a May eighteenth. And it's showing the sewer in proximity to the dam as, as I just mentioned.
Okay. What is that sheet number? I'll check it.
Four hundred.
Okay.
So probably, I mean, I, I can ima-, I can't imagine that, well, I can imagine, but I, I think it'd be appropriate for that toe of slope to be out of that easement.
I agree with you.
Future work zone.
I don't know what future sewer means. I don't know that sheet. There's a sewer there now.
We had something showed up one time where they were saying future sewer is already impaled.
Yeah, so that might, that's an existing condition.
That was something that was built before, so we can get back to the conversation and the question. Sewer line to the other one. All we're doing.
Yes, sir, but it's an existing sewer.
So that's an old reference.
It's an incorrect word. Yeah. But the toe issue, I, I'll have to look at that again.
Okay. Um, I think my last question is, um, the plan quantifies an amount of open space provided. I don't see it designated on the plan anywhere.
As far as the non-residential allocation.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the, the site data table lists that the required amount and then provides the provided amount. But I did not, I didn't see any designated area saying this is the open space we're referring to.
My recollection of that is a lot of the space that was, we come from the, kind of guard area to the northeast of that wood, north of it. So it's going to be the open space and the reserve is green space in there. Whereas even a, a garden was not, not least, or I believe, down in that area, at one time, it's still there.
No, that, that's it.
But you're right, it should be, the numbers should be, period, all the.
Yeah. I see the site data table does list the impervious surface number, so.
But should, but all the numbers should show up on our plan here.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, yeah, site, yeah. There's a little site data table that talks about parking, required parking. There you go. Says point six eight acres. Yeah, point six eight acres is, uh, I, I didn't see it noted.
It's labeled all.
I don't see it labeled.
I know, you know where it is, but you need to have Michael.
Yeah.
The plan says it is designated.
Right, exactly. Or that it could be designated off-site.
Right.
And so I don't, I don't know now where it is.
Definitely if it's off-site, you're gonna surely need to designate for it.
Right.
But these are, this is on-site. Probably, I'm understanding the recollection is that, that three acres of that's around it is, will be, will be in that open space. Which will become part of the site in the future when that three acres is gifted to, uh, to you. But as you're looking at it right now, that would be off-site and that would have to be there.
Okay. Well, I, you know, as Mayor Terry just mentioned, a lot of the things that I just brought up are technical issues that can be dealt with, you know, after the tech. But for really this item, the open space item, um, so I, I would say that we table this until that gets corrected.
Would it be possible to, to satisfy that requirement, to satisfy, to your satisfaction to the manager so that we might be able to move forward with the building formula?
I would like to, I would like that to happen. I'd like you to get the site plan approved and I'd like you to start that building. But I think we've gotta have a site plan that we approve that hasn't designated on. I think that's one of the critical items that the master plan talks about.
Could it, would it satisfy your permit to just have this one sheet come back and make me see three hundred?
No, I think the only other item would be this reference to a public right-of-way as opposed to a driveway that appears to be straddling property.
The property law.
Yeah. Yeah.
So also can you get a little seat three hundred?
Yeah.
So rather than getting the whole plant sitting on a seat, seat three hundred?
I think that would work.
So is it just a table that waits to see, takes three hundred or is there some to wait for your final action?
Well, you know.
I'm, I'm.
I, I know which one, I know, and, and I think it could be approved with corrections by staff confirmed. I think if the rest of the board is comfortable, so I, I want to do that.
We apologize that it's in this circumstance, it's gonna take site, it's gonna rush trying to get in there. You don't see it once you get in there. I would beg to say we would love to have some type of conditional approval. Mr. Royal knows all the conditions that you have identified, the staff here has heard what needs to be done to be better fitted and get them corrected. Immediately, as effectively as a conditional approval for the site plan is filed. We still have a lot of things to be permanent for, for the town that we hold ourselves committed to. Um, you, you're doing compliance program. Proceed and tell, and tell these guys we're correct. We're doing a compliance program that we keep us from getting building permits. But cause us to report this as quick as possible, we'll do that. If we could just contingent on completing to the satisfaction of Mr., Bruce Beck and Mr. Royal, just a moment. Before we get started.
Well, I think Fred's gonna have to regard this, so whether we approve it or not, it's gonna have to provide a stormwater permit. Which most of my questions have to do with that, not utilities. Um, but the master plan talks about open space and knowing where it is and it being identified. So that's something that I think needs to be corrected. But I'm, I'm comfortable making a conditional approval that Mr. Grusbeck be satisfied with the designation of that area on a site plan that comes back in the door.
Would you like us to see a copy of C three hundred at the next meeting? What we think happens?
We'll bring, we'll bring everything back to show you that everything was addressed. And I, I can't promise that the parking of the, I mean, the dumpster location will show us how that works. I think it needs some drawings that actually show how it works if nothing else. Because we have a different understanding ourselves about how, who's gonna get them, show it.
Yeah, with respect to the dumpster, it might be something as simple as that stuff out to the south there. You made, you know, five or ten feet longer. Again, it's hard to say from this map. We, we need a little template to show you the relative size of the garbage.
That's what we need to have then.
Yes, yeah. Okay, you make a motion draft in your.
Yeah, make a motion for conditional approval with the recent medal of corrections to Mr. Grusbeck for final approval.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not being opposed, the site plan is conditionally approved on the staff review of the changes that we talked about. And will we see this again in two weeks with all the changes? Just as, as about as an actual, as if the plan, if what I.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, great, sir. Thanks.
And now, in two weeks, when we, if we satisfy all of this, Royal and the hydrostructure's coming, we're not gonna bring it back to the building without having a final.
That's right.
Record to go.
So it'll only be, it'll only be two weeks or?
Two weeks. Or as soon as it's done. Or six, that's like.
Either two weeks or six weeks. Okay, next item, uh, number three was the one we pulled. Be rescheduled, uh, undetermined future date. And bring us in to update some reports before we transition into budget here.
So, here. Thank you. I'll be as quick as I can, but, but certainly if we have any comments or issues or questions, feel free to jump in. Vernon Park, we're expecting, the Vernon Park, we're expecting to be setting up, uh, some state fencing and signage, um, week of fifteenth. I'm advised that the contractor will be up talking to merchants at a time and, and letting them know what's, what's happening. If you hear any issues or complaints with that, feel, feel free to let us know. Hopefully, no, the idea at this point is to get the communication out there and on the street. Uh, as far as that, that part is concerned, um, there may be some issues from time to time with equipment and things like that during staging. Uh, but we'll be setting up those signs that week and then after that, clearing and grugging. So it looks like that's just about ready to move forward. That same week, uh, the CM AQ East Street Sidewalk Project, uh, we're looking at, uh, construction starting on that beginning, uh, June fifteenth. At this point in time, the idea would be to start at the east end of the project, um, that way. We're looking at probably having, uh, maybe a little bit of a challenge as far as the area over by the post office. And there may need to be some, uh, some work, uh, in the right of way around that time. So we'll do our best to work with the post office and traffic in that area. But, but, you know, and every time I do this, when I say we start on the east side of a project, it doesn't matter which state I'm working in when we start. When I say we start on the east side, I don't know how it happened, but somehow the contractors mobilize over on the west side. So, you know, please be advised. The point is, is we're, we're kinda starting that week, so, uh, the fifteen. Uh, my duties, uh, all other duties as required, my duties as HR director. The, as you're aware, uh, Stuart Bass's last day was this past Friday. Uh, we were forged at, and we have Clarion Associates in town already working on a new deal. Uh, they've provided us assistance on these two other occasions that I can think of in terms of, uh, in terms of, uh, planning assistance. And we now have, uh, two gentlemen from Clarion's office who are able to assist us. One, uh, for twenty-five hours a week and Roger Foden himself is, is gonna be around twelve, fifteen hours a week. And, uh, they were in the office last week before Stuart had left, kinda finding out where, uh, where all the files were. And, uh, where students, Stuart's rep, how Stuart's record keeping and filing worked. And they'll be actually physically in the office, uh, ready to assist folks that, uh, that come in. And, um, so we're, um, we're having, Roger and I are having a meeting with this domestic tomorrow on a few issues. And, um, so we're really looking forward to that, uh, that relationship. Uh, I'm, I'm anticipating that not, uh, not lasting much longer than to the end of August. By which time, uh, I'm hoping has pretty firm direction on, on at least having one planner, uh, in to replace, hired and, uh, in place to replace Mr. Bass. Uh, we'll be posting that position this week. We have, uh, we shut, uh, we shut the door as far as accepting resumes on the customer service position, uh, that will assist. That's a new position that will assist planning and engineering. And we're looking at, um, having interviews, uh, I have three interviews scheduled for this Wednesday afternoon for that position. And I think that, that right there coming out of the box is probably going to have as much of an impact as anything in terms of increasing the level of customer service that we have over there. And those guys, I think, were doing a pretty bang-up job as it was. But, um, simply speaking, as, as you're all probably aware, oftentimes somebody would, uh, walk through the door and those guys would already be, um, one would be on the phone. Another would be meeting with a residential contractor. You know, Paul Horn, sometimes, uh, even when he's there, sometimes you wonder if he's there. So, uh, I, I kid sort of, uh, but, uh, we have a, a lot going on right now. And administrative, an assist, administrative assistant is gonna pay large dividends. And we hope to have that position to build and, and in place, uh, and practicing customer service, uh, probably within three weeks. Uh, we, uh, just recently, I believe, at the end of last week, uh, shut the door, uh, applications and resumes for the engineering tech, which would be a gentleman that would assist, or a gentleman or a person that would assist, uh, Mr. Back or Mr. Royal. Mainly more technical work out in the field and so forth, handling, um, a lot more of the day-to-day stuff, uh, which would allow Fred to probably raise up to a higher altitude on some of, uh, some of the issues that we're looking at. And, uh, we have a, we have a handful of resumes that came in for that. And that, um, I wish, I wish we actually had more of a selection, uh, numerically. But, uh, and if, and if, as, as we go through those, if it appears as if we have to, um, go back to the drawing board, we may. But my, my plan is at least to get someone in here and, and talk to them and find out if they're capable of doing the job. So we will, uh, keep posted on that. But, uh, I think we're probably, um, a little bit less than a month ago goes well having that position, uh, in place and, and practicing, uh, as far as the engineering tech is concerned. Um, the, uh, another, another item of good news, I guess, would be that with regard to the, um, info and infiltration, um, project that Mr. Royal and, um, Mr. Hurd in particular have been engaged with. We were approved, uh, by the state for, um, uh, for the basics of the loan that would be associated with that, uh, project. And, uh, I think the next step, Fred, if I'm not mistaken, is to develop some plans or finalize the plans around that and have the state approve those.
The, yeah, the bid package.
In the bid pack, put the bid package together. Um, the milestone for us on that after, um, after the state, um, blesses it or not, if the state blesses it, then, um, we'll have to ascertain what the cost of that, uh, will be. And, um, the, the essential cost would relate back to whatever, uh, a percentage of, I believe it's two percent of the bid contract, uh, finalizes. And we would have to have that in some sort of escrow, uh, in order for the state to approve that. So until we know what that number is, we can't really come to you guys with that. So, um, so we're gonna be looking at developing that over the remainder of the summer, I think. And then we'll, um, we'll, we'll try to get something in front of you, um, before the state actually has to have a say on it. So, but in effect, that is, believe it or not, good news, because that's the first step to hopefully getting some really cheap money to fix a sewer system that has a considerable amount of, of stormwater info. And I'm sure you guys have heard about the problems that we've had over the last, uh, few years as far as, um, treating a lot of stormwater, which is what we don't wanna do. Uh, our, our system wasn't really built for that. It was built to treat sanitary sewer water. We have a separate stormwater system that, that can treat, treat those things a lot more efficiently and effectively. And so, um, you know, on one hand, we're, we're, we're developing all of these ideas as far as, as far as increasing our, our new capacity. But we also have a lot of work to do with our old capacity. And so this, this piece is a part of, of that. I also have a couple of other items to, to update you on. Probably, uh, as far as the budget is concerned, and I'll probably save that for a budget discussion. One has to do with, uh, with an upsizing of a sewer that took place in the late nineteen nineties, uh, over at the autism center. Just out in open low tunnels and the town is gonna, um, after some discussions over the years with UNC, the town is gonna have to probably assume some costs for that upsizing. Um, there was, uh, a handshake agreement of sorts back in the nineties that the town would, um, the town would assume costs of increasing the size of a sanitary sewer that was, uh, placed and served. Uh, the UNC, uh, Autism Center, uh, at the time, the town elected to upsize that to anticipate future development in the area. There was a, a general agreement that the town would, would pay for that in some way, shape or form. Time goes by and no agreement was ever made, uh, over the years. And so now with the issue of, uh, connecting to that lift, connecting sewer to that lift station and development in the area, we need to finalize the, uh, the, the formal easement, uh, for that property. And in fact, no formal easement was ever arranged. And, uh, again, I can go into that probably in a little bit more detail later on, but, um, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to resolve that issue before, uh, before it's gone on here. Uh, and, uh, with that, I believe, um, I am done for now until the budget discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have any questions for Mr. Grusbeck on this report? If not, uh, we'll go into, uh, updates and commission their concerns and then we'll.
I got one question from Brian. Is, um, the report you just provided, is that still on Evernote? All right, so I'm getting practice checking that out.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, it, it doesn't always go up there in real time the second something happens, but I, I try to keep it up over time.
I don't think it provides any notification that something's gonna be happening.
Yeah, um, I can, I can explore and see if there's a way I can provide more of an active notification or something. But, uh, if I really, I. I mean, it's kinda one of those things that you probably have to, the user has to, to click on.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, I'm sure that there's a tool or a mechanism out there to make that happen, so.
Yeah, it's called memory.
Well, I, no, I mean, as far as I can, I mean, it, it, you know, anymore, I mean, that's the real, uh, conversation by the time. That's the real advantage of something like Twitter where you, uh, I'm not saying we, we're supposed to use Twitter, but that's why Twitter is so popular in that it delivers information right to your handhold without you having to search for it. So if there's some sort of, uh, similar tool here, then I'll, I'll see what I can do with it.
Okay, with respect to mayor, all updates, I really don't have anything, uh, you haven't had ADC meeting in a while.
RPO is meeting this Thursday down in Sanford.
And I'll be attending that.
Are you?
On Stuart's behalf.
Okay.
On Stuart's, Stuart's still here. But I mean, I'll be at the new store at least until we have a new planner.
I'll see you there.
All right, you're there.
Okay. Let's see, any on solid waste? Uh, are we, can we just, uh, man, clerk, you wanna strike that out of the future agendas in the, the solid waste bullet there?
At least right now until they can.
Yeah. Yeah, let's, let's get fairgrounds, man, what does that, uh, downtown business association, BBA?
Uh, meeting is this Wednesday and there's a downtown visioning, uh, meeting for the Main Street program, um, on June twenty-third, six P M. at the Roadhouse. Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
Six P M?
Yep. Yep. Can I confirm that?
Okay.
Seven o'clock, sorry, 7:00 PM.
Okay, through Commissioner Concerns, Commissioner Farrell?
I don't have anything this time.
Mr. Porter?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Good. I got two quick things. Somebody else saw this email from Lenciosa, or her keeper, she's requested that we give some time to a professor from UNC who has done some research or work on the presence of a chemical that appears in Hall River. And by her description, this chemical, 1-4 dioxide, also is appearing in some trace levels in our drinking water. And this professor would like to come talk to us about it. I'm not explaining one way or the other, that some we want to do, so it's up to the board if we want to hear this gentleman on August 24th. So I'll just put it to the board. Is this a briefing you want to hear for 10 or 15 minutes? If so, I would suggest that if we, if we do entertain the professor, we ask staff to also be prepared to, to give a companion report after this gentleman has an opportunity to speak. Because I understand Adam has done a lot of research on this, and maybe shed some light on what the levels of 1-4 dioxide in the river and our water mean, if anything, and whether or not we should be concerned about it.
I'd love to hear it.
And you also agree that we should give Mr. Pickett equal time to discuss what the water plant staff is doing with respect to.
That was my first instinct, definitely.
Yeah, mine too. If you weren't sitting here, if you had health staff, you could actually bring that, that aside, please.
So is that a fire retardant chemical?
To my understanding, it's a solid stabilizer. And it's found in a variety of different cosmetics, pesticides, paint thinners, I guess. And Detlef Knatby is the professor doing the study. And he probably has more information on this than, I'm saying, especially about the East Coast, I would think, he is specialized in this contaminant. You know, I'm very limited knowledge, as, as well as a lot of other people. I mean, this is an emerging contaminant. You know, there's a whole list of contaminants that are emerging, but, you know, he's kind of specializes in this, he's ramped up the flagpole somewhat, so to say. You know, of course EPA is looking at it. There are several different, I guess you could say, research groups looking at this contaminant, but, you know, right now it's in preliminary stages. And I've talked to him on several occasions, he does classes. Yeah, Bill and Wimington are real big into this, with him as well as Pittsburgh. So he's, he's concentrating on the Cape Fear River Basin. You know, I think research is somewhat limited on the other basins. So, you know, right now, it is kind of a weight, a burden of weight on us, I would say so to say, because there's more research that needs to be done.
Well, if the board's in agreement, then we'll, we'll schedule this for August 24th, and I'll, I'll send an email to the Lenciosa advisor or such, and then she can invite the professor to come and we'll hear his, hear his presentation. And then give Adam an opportunity to come afterward about whether or not, I don't know whether we can even test for this.
It's all. We have no way of. Right now, currently, we have ran a few tests. The only lab that we can get to test it is in Florida, and it's a, it's kind of pricey per test. There are several different EPA methods, and currently his EPA method is not the most accurate one, but he says it has been accepted as being accurate. So, like I said, it's, it's emerging, it's still fresh to everyone.
So if we wanted to cross-check his findings, it'd be difficult to do and expensive to do?
Yeah, I mean, yes, and I know.
Okay, well, we'll hear more about that. I'll make sure I send that email out. And another brief administrative note, a reminder, I am going to Minnesota for a family vacation in college, or you know, I'll be going from the 18th to the 26th, and we'll miss our next board meeting. They're rotating all the workers, you know, that's all I have to turn.
I just have one thing. I heard that Judge Carl Fox is ill, and maybe that she did kick, so I think we should make the call.
Yeah, I think that would create.
What, the East Coast?
Yeah, the, yeah, I can find out how to get up, I don't know if you can, Mr. Powell, if you can figure out how to get up.
I'd certainly participate in that, yeah. We talked about that offline, get together, yeah. Thanks for hearing that. I saw that on a page as well. Sorry for that. Okay, that brings us to the end of Commissioner Concerns. And to our next items, work sessions. Anybody need a moment to bring the board up here? We wish for five minutes recess.
Someone?
Second.
All favor, I, I suppose, that we're fighting recess for five minutes.
Again, it doesn't count the property tax, and more on property tax, it's, it's a very conservative estimate. We would expect revenue to actually be higher than what you're, you're seeing there. But we've, I think, as a matter of practice, it's best to be conservative on, on, on a revenue. So this, what we're, what we're looking at is a fund balance appropriation of, I'll say, only $56,206, and it's, it's $40,000 less than the version that you looked at in the previous meeting. We could probably see that lower sometime during the course of the year. I'm going to make a few comments about how it got to that point. But I'll also mention that the enterprise fund, again, assumes a rate increase, and I know you guys might get right to that. But let me just make a couple other comments about how we got to this point on, on the general fund, and maybe to a certain extent on the enterprise fund as well. The, you'll recall some of our discussion at the last meeting related to the trans issue revolving, or relating back to Chapel Hill Transit, the service that we had contracted with, with the Pittsburgh Express. And as you're aware, that that service is in jeopardy with a significant increase in cost. At the, I think, on the day of our last board meeting, the, on the day of our last board meeting, the county board of directors received a proposal from the Chatham Transit Network, which is different from Chapel Hill Transit, we need to talk. I think we agreed, I think I had actually thrown up the email up on the screen and talked about it just a little bit. At that point in time, my understanding was that the Chapel Hill, excuse me, Chatham Transit Network was going to be proposing to offer the same services that Chapel Hill Transit was going to offer, slightly less expensive. And the total cost of their services would total, would be in the run of $120,000 and change. Subsequent to that, if the county approved, then they were going to ask the town to contribute $20,000. And I think that's at that point in time that Mayor Terry suggested that we make some room in our budget to possibly accommodate that. Part of my understanding of that was based on the email conversation that I had with, with County Administrator Charlie Horn earlier today, where he kind of clued me into that, that possibility. In effect, what had happened at the board level was that the board of, the county board elected to go ahead and draft appropriate the full $120,000, though they might not have approved their budget yet either. So that's, that, that subsequent to change. As a result, I, I can, I can say that if you did elect to go in the direction of taking the county board at their word on that full appropriation for the Chatham Transit Network, and we didn't in fact have to pay that $20,000, then we would, we would essentially gain $12,000, which would be eliminated from, to, I guess, as far as line numbers, the 4,200 in the general fund, the administrative contracted services would be reduced from $20,000 to $8,000. So that would give us a little bit more, a little bit more general fund, and would reduce that fund balance appropriation accordingly, if you didn't do anything else. So there's a little bit to play with there and a little bit to consider there. But at this point in time, the budget contains that in it, we can just as easily take that out, too. Nancy and I went back and forth on it, and we just decided, hey, let's, let's see what it looks like with it in there, knowing full well we can just as easily take it out, too. So, so that's, that's a little bit of a background on that number. Some other notes, engineering, and it's, and I won't, I promise I won't read word for word this memo, but just giving an idea where we're at, and you can go ahead and interrupt me at any time here. But we removed, from the general fund, 4,800 engineering, removed a line item of $25,000, because that's actually going to be absorbed by, that's actually going to be absorbed by the Chatham Park, quote-unquote, department, or payment, as well as, we can take $15,000 in, in capital reserves, and that, that gives us a little bit of wiggle room there. We did add a new line for stormwater program, $2,500 for mandatory education that's, that's required by the state. Mr. Bro, I think, is still here, if you have any questions on that. But we put that poke in the eye in there, too, just as a conservative precaution that we anticipate to spend. Within public works, we did recalculate, per, per suggestions, we calculated debt service back home and stretched that over a seven-year period as opposed to a four-year period. And that, quote-unquote, saved us about $12,000 there, if we go in that route and we go with those, those purchases. Within parks, we had originally, you see on the second page, we had originally budgeted for a halftime position, but somehow the benefits were included in that costing. And in fact, those out, and I believe we came up with another $5,000 doing that. And finally, at the water treatment plant, this is subject to, I mean, we can toggle this one on and off if you want to. And I always feel kind of, I, I mean, I always feel like, I always, for whatever reason, feel guilt whenever I decide to cut something with Adams. I can't figure out why. I'm sorry to the other department heads, but for some reason with water treatment plant, I just hate cutting stuff out of that. But we've got, currently, we've got $55,000 that we removed on a capital outlay for the dual media filters that Adam had originally asked for. That's on the basis of Adams, one of Adams' typical fallback positions, as far as anything that he can, if there's anything that we can do without over the course of this next year, and maybe keep an eye on over the course of the year, and those, those dual media filters are probably one of the, if we want to put those back in, we can certainly put those back in. That had, that had a better net effect on, on the enterprise fund and helped us, you know, helped us play around a little bit with the lower water and sewer rate increase that would be necessary to balance the budget if your, if your will is still to balance that, that enterprise fund budget. So, and then the only other thing that I would point out, and you guys are probably a bit aware of this, is that we did have, we do have, and we did get into much discussion of it this year, and, but we do have, you recall last year, we spent a little bit of time talking about the fire department and some conversion to, I would say professional, because the services have always been, I think, generally considered excellent, hopefully. And I think what they're looking to do is obviously come up with better scheduling and more full-time help as far as their ability to cover 24/7. And the fire department, of course, is asking for an increase over what they got last year, to remind that, that last year you elected not to give them the full increase that they had requested. So that increase that the fire department is requesting to complete last year is in this budget as well. We really haven't talked much about that. So, so that's in there as well. But I know that a significant part of, of probably your concern revolves around issues related to water and sewer rates. And so in, in your packets, we also did include some analysis from our finance director as far as some different, some different scenarios that, that we could, we could use to get to that point.
Nancy, does that look like the right one?
Yes, that's the, the metric, and put it ahead of us, please, this is the right one. And that's the copy that you have in front of you this evening.
Okay, if you want. Well, first of all, I guess, if you guys, unless you guys have any questions on the memo, you know, go into the memo later. The, before, before we get into this, if I could complete the thought that I had about the Carolina Living and Learning Center, UNC Carolina Living and Learning Center, AKA the KAK, A and the Autism Center. You'll recall that the upsize, kind of legacy upsize that we have from that dating back to the late 90s leaves us with a possible cost at some point in the near future of approximately $8,000. Initially, we had thought at a staff level that, that we might be able to assume some of those costs in future credits or hookups from UNC facilities that are currently under construction. However, the UNC facilities that are currently under construction are a different affiliate than UNC's Carolina Living and Learning Center. It's a completely different bureaucracy. And so any credits, any connection fee credits, for example, that we might be able to apply against that $8,000 part, it's applicable, or if we can't use it for the new construction, it has to be applied to the existing utility, or the existing facility out on site. So in order to settle that old debt, UNC suggested that, that we consider a utility usage credit. And as you know, our balancing our fund, obviously this is the discussion that we're having tonight, balancing our fund requires us, you know, to not only protect the revenues that we have, but look for ways to increase revenue. It would be very difficult, I think, for us to balance the budget with, if we were to forgive somehow $80,000 in utility credits. The, if I'm, if I'm looking at usage for, for the Autism Center here, you know, if I'm reading this right, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of almost $3,000 per month.
Sounds right. I took that real fast.
So we currently get, we currently collect about $36,000 a year in utilities alone for, from the, from the Autism Center. So that would have to be spread out over, we'd essentially be spreading that out over two and a half years. We'd be forgiving two and a half years of utility payments from the Carolina Living and Learning Center if we went with their proposed solution. I, I told him that was probably a difficult thing for me to recommend, given our budget situation, and asked if they would consider, just in theory, if they would consider other options. For example, let's just wildly crazy, lump sum payment of $80,000, or spreading that $80,000 over a period of time. that $80,000 over a period of time. If we resource that $8,000 from our capital reserves, of which we have...
Two and a half million, that's how many?
We could easily assume that. He hasn't, my contact at the, my contact at UNC that we've, since we've been dealing with over time on this indicated that bureaucratically, it's more difficult for them, bear with me here, it's more difficult for them to wrap their heads around a lump sum cash payment than it would be to wrap their heads around a utility credit or forgiveness. So there's probably some more discussion that can take place on that. But my recommendation for you would be that we consider, if we can come to agreement on this shortly, if we could philosophically consider some sort of payment from the capital reserve program to help settle off this old debt and get us off the schneid and get permanent easement. I'm going to back up, and I'm going to say, I'm going to mention that apparently dating back to the late 90s, the lift station and the sewer that we have that crosses UNC property has no legal rights either, we don't actually own the property that our lift station sits on, and that all kind of comes back to that issue. I get about one surprise a month here, and about six months, nine months ago, that was my surprise. So now we have to, now we have to deal with it. I'll leave you there with that thought right now, okay, because I just needed to get that one off my chest, and then if we want to start talking about these other rates now, then that's appropriate. Nancy, what we're looking at here is the impact of different rates on individuals' waters and sewer bill. I know that there were some figuring and sharpening of pencils and things like that even over the course of the day, so I'll turn this part over to you, and then hopefully we'll move on from there.
What you see in front of you is, at our last meeting, you asked, what would be effective on a typical water bill? So what you see is what would be effective on a typical water bill, and it's based upon 4,000 gallons of monthly usage, and it's showing what the changes would be in the base rate and the volume metric, which is in the usage, and this is based upon different projections. You can see the first one is a 1% base increase with a 5% metric increase, and the cost is, it's, you know, it went up $2.78 as far as the change in the bill, and that's roughly a 3.6% increase when you're taking a 1% base and 5% metric. So this is showing all the different scenarios. One of the things that originally you have the update, is one of that, when I was doing the calculation originally, I did it on a flat, using the $5 of each descent per gallon, and I should have included the tiers, the first 2,000 gallons being at $4.59 per gallon, and then the additional 2,000 gallons at the $5.06, so thank you. So this resulted in actually the cost going down to what you originally thought you were talking about. And this correlates to another item in your package, which was where you're seeing the revenues over expensive, and what the margin ratio isn't building fund balance, so I was trying to show you with the different scenarios what we'd be looking at for the economic change. Brian, that's the one that looks like, that's the handle that I referred to as well. And it's just, it's taking the five-year projections and just trying to give you a snapshot of what it would still look like with these different projections that you can find you. So what I was trying to do is show you what the, this particular slide that you see is showing you the equalities, using the first one again, a 1% base increase, a 5% usage increase. You can see that we never get ourselves in, out of the red, we're still in the black, and our fund balance declines especially every year. And so you have in front of you about 10 or 12 different scenarios just to give you what things would look like. Now, I still would recommend the 2% base instead of a 100% usage, it ends up being about 5.6%, 5.7% increase overall, but this does get us out of and right into the black and gets us building fund balance and it's peaking our margin ratio where we're staying ahead of expenses. And if you look at the comparison in the monthly bill, we're now particularly going to 2.5, 2% base and 7.5 metric, the water bill goes up $4.54 compared to the current rate that we're charging, which is roughly a 5.6% increase. So that's what I was trying to demonstrate for you. Does that make sense, I hope?
It's really nice to have the chart of the difference scenario.
But one of the things we can, I wanted to mention is that we really have to look at both the base rate and the volume metric, and because, again, because of elasticity, you can expect that when we raise the rate, usage is going to go down, so we really need to raise that base rate in order to help offset that revenue loss. And so this factors in about a 7% decrease in usage, which I've included in my revenue projections, basing that if we do a rate increase, we're going to see the usage going down. So I've already factored that in as part of my formula too, with that, is in the revenue projections, which of that, which of that revenue over expense is showing me the margin ratio as well.
So for the in-town customer...
Yes, I only use in-town, I think it's...
The 2% increase is 54 cents a month.
There you go.
Times 12 is $6.
Yeah, so it's not too bad if it's that.
Yeah. I think when you look at the real numbers, as you've done, you know, you see your recommended 2, 7.5% increase increases a bill of 4,000 gallon per month customer by $4.31.
Exactly. So not too bad.
It's not a big number, and it nets out to about 5.5% increase in your water bill.
And it will get us out of the red, get us back into black numbers, and allow us to build our fund balance, because we know we're going to, we need to have money for infrastructure for future capital improvement, so this is going to get us trajectory in the right direction.
There's a lot of bank.
Was that...
There's a lot of bank.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you, Nancy, that sets us up to be more generous to the water plant next year on that sand filters. You know, if the revenues come in as expected, we can perhaps fund that as a capital project. Might even be able to make that decision mid-year if the revenues are looking really good. Wouldn't have to put it in their operating budget, we could put it in the capital project, do it in January, February if the revenue's great, and so, if it realizes what we expect. So that's me saying this is support to 2.75.
That was really, as I recall, I mean, that was really a lot of the work that you had before you this evening, unless you got, or this evening really, until the end of the budget. You know, and it seems like, it seems like each budget has its own little set of issues really that were, you know, the main majority of the discussion involved around, and I think it was definitely shaping up to be utility rates this year. So, you know, that's what we have, I mean, we're pretty close, I think, right now with this budget. You know, it all depends on, it all depends on what our tolerance is really to a rate increase, so.
Do we know our average residential customer volume?
I have that in my analysis, because that's one of the things that I was looking at in order to make my projection, and so I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think it was pretty close to the 4,000 gallon unit served me, but I have to go back and look, because then I'm often, I've looked at that and done that data, but I do have that in, remember I mentioned that my spreadsheet has like 15, 16...
Yes.
...in fact, and that's one of the things I was looking at, because I wanted to see what, I'm doing a trend analysis to see what our usage had been over the last year, knowing that it's been peaking up slowly as we grow, and so, and I just can't remember, but I can certainly let you know what it is.
I think the folks at UNC, what's the gentleman's name who was helping with Jeff Hughes?
And David Tucker as well.
Yeah, I think they tend to use 5,000 gallons as a common...
They do, on their dashboard?
As a common, average for...
So we were, we were under, I know we were, we were the odd, I think we were closer to the four, but I can find that out.
Well, if that's the average, you could, if you're just going through back of the match, go math on it. Our total revenue gains would be, if you had, you could take your, where do we say, $4.31 a month times 12 times, we got 1,450 customers.
No, we're closer to 1,800.
1,800, that's right, to 17, to 1,800. So you could get a ballpark of what your increased revenues would be. That's probably, that's probably plus or minus 15% does look best, that's the best way to calculate it. What do you want the board to weigh on there right now? We seem to have consensus that 2 and 7.5 is tolerable. I'm voting yes for that.
I will present Commissioner Volkmann before she goes, tell them as possible. I was just relating that to what she said.
I'm going to take her that.
Are you okay with the 2 at 7.5? Looks like it'll give us something on the order of 90, 90, 100,000.
And honestly, I feel like this is the worst budget discussion I've been in now, and it seems like this is always the issue. And it's, yeah, I just, I feel terrible that more underserved people might suffer from this.
I like that more of a safety use issue, though.
Me too. You know, it's like the case, you know, if somebody's really trying to cut corners, they can reduce the use of water, so I do watch, but you know, it's like, like I said, it's really not going to be that easy. Not a single person, for an elderly person that doesn't use that much water to begin with, it's really not going to be that easy. At some point, we're going to do something, and this seems like a way to not get out and actually start building.
And that's the objection.
Oh, they'll notice.
Well, hang on that.
Oh, yes, they will. I have people calling me, it's $2 more, they're ready.
Well, the difference...
Especially the widows, you know.
The difference between 2% and 5%, 2% and 7.5% for that 4,000 gallon customer is $1.26.
And another thing, go ahead.
The customers that I'm referring to are your customers that are into minimum water use, you know, single widows.
Well, there's some good news with respect to that piece, one of the things I...
They notice in penis, I'm telling you, they notice.
Yeah, one of the things I did was I did some math on, well, what does it mean for the 2,000 gallon user and the 11,000 gallon user like me?
You couldn't say it.
Big Milcoxes in here.
What kind of commercial operation are you running out of that house?
He has a chicken plant.
Very great question. Now, if you're using just 2,000 gallons, your monthly increase is going to be 2.26, and that would just, and overall, it's a 4.5% increase. If you're a big user, guy like me who waters his lawn, you're going to monthly increase is 11.25 and about 6.6% increase. So that, by heavy weighting it towards the usage side, by keeping the base charge at 2 and the usage charge at 7.5, it gives some relief to those folks that you're worried about.
That would be acceptable.
It's a lower percentage overall for them, but if you reverse that, if you made the heavy loaded base charge and light loaded usage charge, it would be just the reverse, the higher percentage increase would fall, and the low users, the lowest would fall on the bigger, so I think we've got kind of...
And the other thing I wanted to mention is that this, I did a five-year projection, I actually can go out, in the wild, cost 20 years, and that's not, that means we're not raising rates with, by going with a 2% base rate and a 7.8% metric rate, volume rate, that I'm projecting over time, that we still won't, we won't have to be having this conversation next year, this is, this will allow us to keep the rates steady, because I factored in inflation and expenses increasing, but also, also factoring that we're going to be growing our customer base at the same time. So the intention is that we won't have to be raising rates every other year, that this is going to sustain us going forward, and so that's sort of the family regression.
Well, is it possible then to adjust that curve if we get into year two or three of this and we see our curve is much different from the one that we're...
Definitely, we can always bring the rates down, if that's the case, yes. And I actually have in my spreadsheet where it shows respect over time as well.
Is that a constant assumption about a 7% decrease in usage? That's probably hard to do.
I don't remember.
They're playing a pretty broad brush with that, and I think, as I recall, I think a lot of the, you know, a lot of that elasticity occurs when you jump up, when you give them a real shot to the system.
The initial.
Yeah, I think it's just the first...
First year.
Yeah, because I factored in about a 1.5% 2% growth in customer base, which again was very conservative, and about a 3% increase in expenses over time, and we're still staying ahead and having a margin ratio of one or better and building fund balance. So I can, if you'd like, I can actually venture my spreadsheet through you, it's been pretty cool.
I'll take that offer.
Okay.
You would?
Yeah, exactly.
It's pretty cool, so I could tell you, David Tucker and I worked really hard on that, and it was well worth it, because it means a great social media trend analysis.
Please do, send it, I'd love it.
Okay, I love it. Mr. Grig, we have one question. On this, on the 2% base and the 7.5% increase on volume, is that going to get us with this budget you have proposed to us right now? Or not any more curves?
That's, if you could pass, based on what we have, you could theoretically pass this budget tonight, and that's what we would have. I think there we, to answer your question, yes, that would, that would allow us to not cut anything else from the budget.
Other than the rest...
On the enterprise fund, other than what, right, on the enterprise fund, other than what you have right now, I mean, that, unfortunately, in this calculation, this budget you have tonight, Adam loses his $55,000 dual media filter, but that's it. You know, we put that back in, you know, we can put that back in, but this budget assumes that that's...
There's a note here for tonight's meeting that says, the version of, this version includes a 6% increase in water sewer charges.
I was just giving a round figure, so it's actually more like 5.7.
So that was the 2 and the 7.5?
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Okay, because my question was, that includes a base rate increase.
Yeah, I was rounding up for Brian.
She has to give us something.
Okay, so it's a 2% increase in the base, 7.5% increase in the usage, which typically for a 4,000 gallon per month customer translates to a 5.5% increase in their charge. Okay.
Agreed.
So that was the number we were...
It's, and it's right, and I think, as Mary Terry stated at one of the previous meetings, the only first half of this was, is if there's a way to better communicate what actually is the increase, and that's how, I think we kind of started off talking then about what the effect would be on people's actual bills, but I think, and I'm not trying to wordsmith this, but I think the objective to communicate is something closer to 5, 5.5% as opposed to throwing a number, even if it's just usage, 7.5%, because that's the number that people are going to look at, and the Milcoxes will say, we're going to have a 7.5% increase.
Or go add the 2, you're going to be 7.5%.
So it's going to take about 20 minutes, half an hour of me sitting down with Bill and you, finger puffing and everything else, and you can, I mean, it's not easy, I mean, it's not, yeah, I mean, he's coming onto it for the first time, so, but it's, that's what I'm afraid of. So that's, that's why I think going, come full circle, that's why... So that's, that's why I think going, come full circle, that's why I think we originally put in that, sort of assigned that paragraph that you're talking about.
And I think a really powerful way to describe it is, if you use four thousand gallons a month, you're spending four extra dollars a month. That communicates to everybody quickly.
Dollar per thousand. Actually, it works out a dollar per thousand across all three usage levels. That's a good way to articulate it.
I'm sorry to say that, yeah.
Look at the sheet I've got here, for, for a two thousand gallon user that increases about two dollars and twenty cents, or approximately a dollar per thousand. For the four thousand, it's four dollars and thirty one cents, or about a dollar a thousand. And for the ten thousand gallon user, it's eleven dollars, or again, about a dollar a thousand.
And Commissioner Beaufort, you had asked at the last board meeting, what the cost of the new position would be, if we went seven point four.
Yeah.
With the water treatment plant. And as I mentioned before, that there was a lab technician position that was funded in fifteen, fourteen, fifteen's budget that was at part time. And by, by going for twenty four seven shift, the actual increase in personnel costs is eighteen thousand and eight. So that's what it, that's what the difference would be as far as bringing on a twenty four seven position. Or, I mean, by that position, so you could go twenty four seven, so that, so that would be the increase to the personnel budget.
And that's in the base, yeah?
Yes, the national budget that you're choosing on.
Can we still have the lab technician?
And the lab technician is in part time and waste water budget. With the part time, without that thing.
Okay. So we're, we still have all the function, or just gaining capacity?
Exactly.
Okay.
So are we ready to give the manager some guidance on this floor, or are you ready to, since they were pretty close to agreeing on two, but seven point five? I'll support that, Mr. Attorney, support that.
Yes.
I'm not afraid of that, but yes, I guess.
Okay, so we can move on to another matter. As we kind of plod through this tonight, it's nine thirty now, and I'm trying to give the manager all the guidance he needs to, so you guys can finish this up in two weeks. You want to just start at the beginning of the budget, and you see page by page, and as the manager had already said, I think this thing is in pretty good shape here. I don't think this is going to take very long as we just knock out these questions one at a time. Perhaps we should start with the issue of the bus route, the twelve thousand dollars that we can save, you want to take it out or leave it in?
Let me, let me ask this, my request for that money is Jim Nass and I have, with Paul Horn, put together a really nice document, have started a fundraising campaign to try to get the sixteen thousand dollars that would be required to finish the pocket park. And it's in full design. The contractor has agreed to hold that price until July fifteenth. They're going to start construction June fifteenth, so we've got a month into their construction, and they're only going to be there for sixty days. It's a two-month construction project. That if the, the private campaign falls short, that we could take that twelve thousand earmark it for whatever shortfall there is, so that we can finish that part.
When's the construction going to be over?
Uh, August fifteenth is assumed, no weather delays.
So you get a next year's budget?
Yeah.
So that's a net, that's a net zero, just move it from this to the park project.
And if the private campaign is successful, then that money can revert.
Revert to one balance.
Yeah.
Okay, without.
We've just started the campaign, and folks I've talked to already have, you know, probably say, let me get back to you, but that they are, I think they're going to come through.
So who's driving the campaign?
Uh, Jim is, I'll do them what I can. You got ideas? Jim Mouse, who is the chair of the A B C board.
Good to do that. Does everybody?
People can sponsor different kinds of park bench, or.
They could, they're going to do that, they want to. Um, you know what, I'll send you the flyer we put together, it's, it's very attractive, communicates well. Any list, all the items that the cost is based on. Nancy has set up a, or will set up a fund to receive the money and is prepared to give letters acknowledging contributions so the folks can have their tax deduction. So I would make that.
So nobody really knows what we have.
We just got, we just got the flyer put together, I met with Jim last night.
Can you click it up?
Yep. I, I, we're all ears about how the ideas about how to do it.
I mean, you're not going to, you're not going to article, so print it in paper. That's what I'm saying, I don't know. It's going to be a different funding, I don't know if there are any ideas or not.
So Nancy.
Paul Horn will know about that.
If we, if we agree to do what Commissioner Beaufort suggests, what's the easiest administrative way to do it? Is, is the park project a capital project? So shift, we can't shift this money to the parks operating budget, that would get the job done with.
Well, it, um.
Needs to go into the.
Right, right.
Capital project.
It's just showing as an undesignated capital project in the general fund budget. And so.
It's not being paid for out of the parks operating budget, it's a capital project.
It's not, it's not in parks budget, but we could do a budget amendment to move it there, or we can leave it, leave it as a separate line item.
Yeah, he's asking, this is now in the operating budget, of the projects in the C I P.
No, it, it was actually, in, in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen, it was fifty thousand dollars that was, that was allocated for capital projects in the general fund budget.
Yeah, we moved it, we had it, we had it in the C I P at the time, but we took it from C I P, plugged it into the general fund as a capital projects budget.
Mm-hmm. So it, so it has its own line item within the general fund. And what I could do is move it from that line item to, you know, parts as a capital outlay. And put it in, and put it in the parks budget.
So reduce, reduce the line for us and plus up the line for parks, capital project. It's a, it's a net zero change, I think everybody supports that, we got. We didn't do that for the. Let's talk about that, that wouldn't fund right, you know, raise the money.
Yeah.
It's the purpose of it, well, it actually did really well.
I think that one is a really good one, see, they're like starters, or go funding, you know, bucks?
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense, that way it gets people very tangible ways to do it.
And anybody, all of the most in their age too. I mean, that's the thing, like, if somebody in France decides to give you five bucks, that's still five bucks. I mean, just because they might think the park was cool, you know, I mean, you've got a field for the whole.
It gives people, I mean, it's hard to, especially with people that, it just gives people an easy way to contribute a little bit. And it's, it's amazing how much.
Little state.
It has a deadline, so it gives people, I'm like, hey, you got a minute? Yeah, this one you'd be, I think you're usually how old, whether or not you're.
Maybe for a shorter, a longer.
I think there is a limit there.
But I would, Paul Horn should find out, and probably would know that limitations there are for municipalities, non-profits. But I think it's pretty wide open too, but legally, I don't.
That's a good way to give to the tech savvy younger population, they'll want to do that.
We didn't pay Warren, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think young people don't need to sell all their. It's a great concept, yeah. So he can contribute something that, like, even the high school kids might all be the dollar, or something, because it's their town, it's life.
So it is going to be a revenue product.
Well, think about, you know, Kid Star, you always have to have a little video, you know, something, it's interesting, and graphics, so. Tell me if there's something I can do with the video.
It'd be, it could be like thirty seconds, or minutes. But definitely the images, if you get in on, and think about that, those are also compelling to people. I totally can, it's a doable.
Okay, yeah.
I think it's okay.
I think you can delegate somewhere, they can delegate this amount, um, to get your name on the bench, those amounts are good, you know, you can specify what people's benefits are.
It's like they can have premiums, if we have any talent pits or coffee cups, we can fill them with those, or if you want, they love that. The five dollars you might get. If they're half to a town we're needing.
I can offer fantasy football advice.
Well, see, some people really like fun things like that.
They do, they do.
You wouldn't want my fantasy.
I think that's funnier the better, you know.
Yeah.
Or like your picture with the bear.
Yeah.
A free Dr. Pepper.
Okay, moving on. Moving on. Want to try and answer the manager's question of how to deal with this eighty thousand dollar. But I assume he wouldn't have given us that lengthy briefing if he had the attorney that had already determined that this is a debt we have to pay.
Well, that was part of my, that was part of my, they're basing this on some costs that were generated back quite a while ago, two thousand and two.
Mr. Vessi, can we claim statute of limitations, and sorry, you didn't?
You could, but.
Kind thing to do, yeah.
You're dealing with the state, and like the manager said, we don't have an easement, we own the pump station site.
Yeah.
And we need to do that, so. And this oversizing was at the town's assistance, because it, you know, assumed that there would be some future development in that area and so forth, so on. Cash is probably, from the town's perspective, is probably an easier way to do it. There are some, I would say, interested parties who might be willing to fork that over in exchange for credits to them, or some of the fees that they might have to pay in the future.
Well, I think, remembering back to Nancy's last financial report, I think we collected more in the way of capital recovery and access fees that we budgeted this year. I think that, which seems like the appropriate place to take it, from that set aside for capital construction of utilities, it seems like appropriate. And I think there's a fund balance there that we can charge, I'm inclined to just, you know, direct the manager to pay it.
Yeah, that's, that was because, like Nancy said earlier, we're looking at roughly two and a half million we have currently on balance there, and I, that seemed like the quickest and easiest way to go about it. But, but as I said before, I don't know, that was nothing that they had considered. And so I don't know whether he was speaking for U N C or not, but I told him I, if I could get some direction, I would report back to him.
Yeah, but my, if it was just me, my direction would be, I would hate to drag you through negotiations around a five-year payment plan. I, you spend a hundred and a half hours sorting out what we're going to do, when you could make one phone call and say, if you send me an invoice, I'll pay the bill.
Yeah, and that's, and I appreciate, we, we picked, I mean, Mr. Metzky suggested as well, and, you know, it's six of one, half dozen of the other, and either we forgive, either we give future rates to, you know, Shannon Park, or we, you know, it's essentially, all, all of that money is essentially going to the same place that we'd be drawing this anyway. So we can either pay now or pay later, I would rather have you do that.
I would rather have you do that, I, I don't want to drag you through a complex negotiation. If it's a, if you and the attorney agree that it's a just debt that we need to pay, my preference would be, have you call U N C, ask them to send you an invoice, or pay it out of the capital reserve? Anybody have a different opinion?
Well, the, they are also, I think, a customer of this pump station. So the town's gaining access to the property now, doing the maintenance, providing them with sewer. Is there an alternative to now operate the pump station?
No, they had an offer.
Yeah, so we're both kind of in a tough spot, so let's.
But the more, the more customers you look on to this thing, the more it's important that you own it. I mean, when it was just them, and they were the only customer, and, you know, it didn't make that much difference. But now with Bojangles coming on, and Shannon Park coming on, and I don't know what else is going to go on in that area, you need to own the pump station.
And that makes me change my guidance, I would say, call them, say, just as soon as we have a recorded easement, you can send me an invoice and I'll pay it.
And they actually required us to pay it, and then give us the, they, they, I think, stepped out on the limb a little bit in order to give us the temporary use.
See, it's got to go to council estate to do the estate easement.
Yeah, I don't want.
They've already, I think, considered that. Yeah, I'm not even a hundred percent sure again, but I, I still have to run by a cash option for it, maybe if they were still, he kind of had margin orders as far as utility credit, and that was something I didn't go down to.
I think that money's the water, so, you know, even if, if they don't want it all, well, then come to invoices.
Right.
You know, twenty thousand over the next four years.
We'll give it to you now, otherwise, maybe we spread it out over time, because they could, they, I think they totally expect something like that next, that we spread it out over a period of time. We can give it all to them right now, if they want.
Why don't we just empower the manager to, it sounds like there's some negotiating that has to be done, but it's, now, is this, do we need to put this in the budget somewhere? Eighty thousand dollars in the budget line?
Not, not, because it's kind of out of the reserve, you know, because we break up the money in our reserve.
So when we're, at the time, you're ready to write the check, it wouldn't require a budget amendment to just.
I'll do it, yeah, I'll, I can do it, that's all right.
So when, when you get the details worked in, and you're ready for maybe an invoice, you can create a special budget amendment.
It doesn't, it doesn't affect what we're talking about, the amount of it, that we brought up, we brought something else.
So they, they go to council estate, get approval to do this transaction, and then we would pay them?
I'm not sure what kind of move goes first, but. My, my next move would be, call, call the person that I've dealt with, unless Mr. Metzky has another inroads. But I would call the person that I've been dealing with, he's essentially their property, he kind of manages a lot of their property issues and takes up, takes those things upstream. I'd call him, tell him where we're at, he'll take that to his, you know, to his superiors, and they'll decide whether or not they agree. And then from there, I would imagine, we'll get something formal created.
I think the council estate can sometimes take a while to get chavined.
We've been talking about this for, since Bojangles was thinking about coming along, so. And it's been twenty years, so what.
I was just thinking, okay, one trillion, eight thousand dollars a year, fine, ten years, let's, you know.
Okay, let's, let's start.
Yeah, that's fine, I got, if you guys are comfortable, and there's, there's more decisions to be made, I think I'll see you having to avoid it if I'm not able to do it.
Let's just go ahead and start plowing through the draft budget, I'm, I've already turned page five, table of contents, it's a thing for itself. The only question I see on page five is, is are we all comfortable with the recommendation for a no-tax increase? And about fifty six thousand contribution for the fund balance, does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Do you all, do you all want to try and pay for that with a tax increase? That's the, we can move on to the next page. So I had a question about, on page seven, a residential, we saw a waste, we're, we're charged on the tax bill, one hundred and sixty five dollars. Has Waste Management asked for a rate increase this year?
One point six percent based on C B I.
Okay, so do we need, is it one sixty five what we charged the citizens last year? This is up?
The sixteen fif, that, what we actually pay is nothing at all less than that, because we are, this is, this, what you see here for the, the personal solid rate has been grossed up so that it, it includes inflation. But we have not, did not, I did not, I did not agree that by one point six percent, because there's enough of a cushion there.
Okay, that's within the increase. Okay, yes, within the increase, yeah, but recall, when we set this up, we wanted to make sure that we were charging a little bit more than they were charging us.
It's got, it's got a nice cushion, so...
And we're still there, okay.
And maybe, we might have to next year, but this year I felt that we could still leave the fees where they were.
What about plus-ing up any of these other fees under C here, are they, are they, stay the same?
They're all the same.
Okay, so we're letting inflation slide this year, make it up next year, but... Everybody okay with that? Any other questions on page seven? Are A, those are more fees that are staying the same as what's laid out?
Well, I'm finding that I've got two requests for additional fees again this year, conditional zoning, rezoning applications and planned development district applications. This might be the third request.
We will add some more, I guess.
Well, we have, we have, yeah, we've got these applications and I don't know that we're charging anything.
You said conditional zoning?
Conditional zoning, rezoning, there's a conditional use rezoning, but not a conditional zoning, and those are different. And, uh, planned development district zoning.
Yeah, if you sit with it, that'd be, may be perfect.
Mm-hmm.
For A.
I think we charged eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, these are kind of similar, I would say, to an MUPD, which is cost of technical review plus eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's a simple way to solve it.
For both of them, hold on a second?
Yeah.
So eight, eight twenty-five for those two?
Uh, the cost of the technical review plus eight twenty-five. It's one way to do it, I, I don't know, you know, one of the things we talked about was, uh, while we were going through the process of the PDD with Shannon Park to kind of track, um, costs, try to figure out what a fee should be. And so, I don't know, we've crunched all those numbers and looked at demand hours involved in that and the cost of the town, but I think a simple way to do it is to say technical review plus something.
We might wanna consider adding smaller, if I have to.
Yeah, small area plan too.
Page nine. You said a question for Mr. Royall, on page nine, we're charging fifty dollars per BMP facility for operations and maintenance annual inspection, those are pretty close, that's seemed really low to me. We really, we got more than fifty dollars a year.
That was a number I just put on the table last year, or the year before when we started, so, um, I haven't been tracking my time studying BMPs on plans or in the field. I would imagine it would be more than fifty dollars though.
Now, is this collected annually or one time?
One-time payment in the beginning, it's not an annual payment. And so we can review the BMP, um, this is kind of a specialty item. And review the O and M plan. Make sure the O and M plans, um, approved, reported, and all that good stuff, so it's...
So how many hours did you spend on all of those?
I don't know.
Four and four?
Yeah.
I wonder if they have five hundred dollars.
There's also time going in the field, so as they get built, I'll be going in the field to look at them.
We're getting infrastructure something, that's for five hours, that'd be five hundred dollars. I'll make it on a couple of costs, like five hundred two. Maybe a thousand or better. Do you see how that, see how that feels? If we're comfortable, the reason that's five hundred and then, uh, three, three BMP facility, you get fifty dollars, Rachel's been about thirty minutes on that, maybe spend it up for five or six hours. Do you want to recapture that cost at least to be something greater than five hundred?
I see five three.
We don't like that next year, we can look at it again, okay? Four years to your feet. Okay, I, I looked at these orders, who are recent, they are in fact, that they've got those in there, I'm going to set four five, so those are good. Any other questions on page ten? Okay, on page eleven, when was the last time we increased these excess fees? If they haven't increased in a while, a two percent increase would change it to six twenty-five, eleven thirty. I hate to, hate to put these off, and then year after year after year, and then have to catch up with a ten or twenty percent increase.
So two point five and...
Six point two five and eleven point three zero would be a percent increase. Sure, I think that was about the consumer price index that you were listing. Everybody comfortable with six point three five, eleven point three zero?
Yeah. Personally, I'd like to know about NEXIS, you know, the value.
I would, I would too, and I don't know that they shouldn't be done.
Right.
But I don't wanna go backwards.
Yeah, I can, I can accommodate, I'll go.
I think those fees were about a quarter of that seven years ago, when the NEXIS were changing it, it was, cost for building a sewer plant's about ten dollars a gallon. So we tried to make those more reasonable.
Can we, can we just back up to page ten for a minute?
Okay.
One thing that just wants you to be aware of, under, um, B, bulk water sales, there's, that, that is some new language. The twenty-five dollar service fee for each strip plus the water that's being collected, and then also requesting every funding with positive, you know, too. This is, um, in calling with others, um, jurisdictions, we could really have been leaving money on the table by not, by not charging it, if the system request to recruit, um, some of our staff.
On page eleven, uh, on the table, I think, there's probably that, no, zoning district, PDD listed there, does that mean it's listed in, although, we just put it under multifamily funds.
I think we recently went through this exercise and I think ended up choosing a commercial district?
Well, that was, that was what I was...
Oh.
Trying to apply towards the...
Yeah. So that was an M, well, that was a M.
But I think, I think the mayor's department probably do need a, a PDD letter. Yeah, that's all, that's all gonna be, you know, I mean, you can put the classification in there.
Where to, where to pick the value of that, uh, if we let the staff sort out, yeah, have a PDD line and, and I believe the staff's best guess would be this, uh, how that should be priced, uh, as you compare to the other results there. I think on page twelve, thirteen, so now we're getting into the spreadsheets. I really did not have much here, I'll be acting a little best here, but if you all stop, if you wanna stop on page...
Okay, I, well, one, one question about formatting, um, I'm just wondering, do we need two columns here? The original two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget and the revised two thousand fourteen budget? I mean, that information, I don't, doesn't help me.
Yeah, and the...
Does it?
You'll see, you'll see, you'll see those because, I mean, often, this is, this is the where you were at the end of the last process.
Yeah.
Things might have changed, and so we revised it to this.
It shows you how many budget a bit that you did during the year earlier, you know?
And so, yeah, so for a particular line, you could be paid more thought into how that line is affected over the course of the next year. And I, that's the only thing it's trying to do, if I take it out, we can...
Well, you know, I didn't understand that was what it's, what it was supposed to do, so...
It doesn't always change, sometimes it does. I, I, you know, for my, I don't know how Nancy feels about it, I believe it'd be a little bit skinnier than they are, formatting needs to be a pain.
Yeah.
And see, this, this formatting that you have in here is not clean right now, and the final formatting will be a lot better than this.
Yeah. And it seems to me we've got a column that says percent increase from original budget. And I think that what is, what that is saying is percent increase from the previous years.
It was the previous year's all.
Okay, okay, so I was trying to figure out what it was trying to tell me.
It's definitely from the previous year's all.
Okay, okay. Um, and then I thought what would be really helpful to me is if I could have another column that says, what is the percentage of the budget? This figure recommend, uh, this recommended budget figure represents. So in other words, I could see the temporary salaries is point zero two percent of the entire budget. Kind of real quick glimpse.
Well, those would be percentages, percentages of decimal points on some, I mean...
So by each, by each category, that personnel operating and then have a, say, a bridge to that fourth?
I mean...
I've done that before, but not necessarily in this document. I mean, we can come up with a separate, maybe a separate, uh, separate page of tables or something like that, might show that.
It'd be helpful, give me a measure of magnitude.
On the same page as the table, because I think that might get kind of complicated, if I understand.
Do we have a percentage of the grand total or might it be percentage of the...
I mean, I have...
Of the grand total.
Yeah, I have, like, the, the stuff that I'll do for retreats and stuff like that, usually it's like a pie chart that shows that sort of, and so we can put that in the stack if you want.
Sure.
At least you're right, those are a lot, those are gonna be point zero 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 one percent.
Yeah, it's more informative than the aggregate if it's a full ten.
Maybe, uh, maybe fourteen or fifteen. Sixteen or seventeen. Eighteen or eighteen. Three forty-one. Two forty-three.
Uh, we've got on item twenty, uh, twenty percent increase, assuming that's a new hire.
What page are we on?
Uh, page twenty-two.
Or is that some of the realignment from the audit that you did?
It's, it's re, it's a realignment, um... Because the town, um, town, for example, the town manager's salary was, was part, um, partially allocated to water and sewer, I've got it now on the general plan.
So where does this, the overtime pay go for, for the, for the, for the public works?
Um... Public works, I think, have, uh, what I, what I see, I'm sure those public works have more overtime than, than your staff. And they get, and they get called, you know, called back in for services and that.
Water being braced, bad weather.
Yeah.
Forty-four, five, let's get one, forty-two, three, forty-four, five. U B D, six-seven. Eighty-nine. Thirty, thirty-one. On, on page thirty-three, I had a, uh, just a question on, it relates to more than one page, but on, uh, line, seven eighty capital out of eight, would it be possible to put a footnote somewhere in blank space down there that, uh, like, say, whether that's for, if that's for a backhoe or a truck or a car or whatever? If there is a footnote, this...
Well, then you're kind of, you're kind of opening that up to the rest of the document, I do.
I can tell you what to do.
Yeah, it's easy enough to do, and we, we've provided all of that in the past, and I believe Nancy and I have talked about a separate page, maybe make some footnote on some of the lines, you know, where you, you know, you got, you got okay with this, there'll be a footnote next to it, and then there'll be an explanation of it down below. Answer your question, yeah, it's just a matter of squeezing the formatting and doing it that way, but I'm, I'm reluctant to do it just more than I do overall, because I know that question's a lot.
Well, capital equipment, just, I think, as people are particularly interested in how many cars and trucks take from mine, if, if, another way to do that's just have a standalone page to solve the, all, all equipment, all equipment over five thousand dollars that's in the budget.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, and we'll, you know, like I said, I would put, I would put like a little, you know, little superscript one up here, and then on that page, um, get next to the line, capital, uh, the list, like you said. It, uh, many kind of a big number of people, why, no, over the years, I'm starting to think that city councils will argue more over the smaller numbers.
Yeah, yeah, I'll tell you what, so as not to further complicate what you gotta do here in the next two weeks, I'd be happy just to see, if you wanna, if you could list all the capital equipment in your line and make it a page in your cover memo, not, not worry about trying to stick it into the budget anywhere, just so that they, with the cover memo that accompanies the final draft.
Yeah, and what we, what we talked about doing this year that's maybe a little bit different from last year is, uh, we've been keeping running notes on all this stuff, so that's gonna be pretty easy to do. But I think what we, what we wanna do this year that's maybe different from last year is, is you know how it'll be, uh, there'll be a cover memo, uh, this, if I did, I think, maybe this time around, doing a, a sort of an executive summary of what the budget represents and putting that out there for general consumption, after we approve the budget, I think that's the sort of thing that, but, I agree, I mean, even in this document, this is something that we've talked about, as far as adding more of a, a list of, you know, all the stuff that, um, capitalizes that we're purchasing.
And what that is for, uh, for the budget is HVAC improvements, percent of dollars.
Seven per table, yeah.
What if we, can also talk to, about making some AB improvements in here too? Do we have that in buildings or is that, that in your home? I thought that was in buildings. That's how it public works, yeah?
Yeah, I felt we put it in... I think we were, I thought we were putting that into B and G maintenance.
All right. What I, I wanna replace, I wanna, this, this thing here that I'm propping up with an eraser and a lens cap, for the, this is gonna get replaced, but if we put an elevating screen up there with... an eraser and a lens cap, and the, this is going to get replaced whether we put a telelating screen up there, whether we do something like this and paint it down, but, my thought is to put a beast size monitor up on that wall, uh, an actual flat screen monitor, and then get another portable monitor that we would put back there, so that we'd have that image also back there for the folks in back, whenever we have the whole family here.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I'm just kind of trying to wrestle with this, but-
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Anyway, that's all we were talking about.
Yeah, carry on. Page thirty-four, thirty-five. So there is, oh, I see, I see the one percent, so the six percent increase there, okay, that's good. Twenty-six, thirty-seven. Page thirty-eight, that's your chat apart on the first. Any questions about that? I'm not all going to try to understand why we're doing this way, but I'm happy to trust by itself from the manager to keep that sorted out. Forty, forty-one. The enterprise funding. Twenty-two, twenty-three, any questions? Forty-five. Forty-six, seven. Three, eight, nine. I have no more questions, but I'll, I'll, if you'd stop me if I, one, that, maybe fifty, fifty-one. Fifty-two, fifty-three. Forty-five. Six. Seven. Eighty-nine. Anything other than, for capital projects, any questions about that?
This is, this is a little bit, and my, my predecessor may have been a little bit more comprehensive than I was in the first couple of budgets, and I think this is a little bit more comprehensive than I was in my previous couple of budgets, so, um, I think what we've got here is something that's actually backed up by the resolution. You know, it doesn't, I want to just point out, it doesn't necessarily make you to all of those things, uh, it doesn't commit you to those, those purchases in future years, I mean, that's still a flexible document, but, uh, it does just kind of create a, create a more formal guideline for us over the course of the next year. Tries to help us plan for future, um, capital purchases as well, so.
Yeah, I see some things in here that I would have done differently, but it's not worth even talking about, uh, I wouldn't list it, there's some stuff in here that shows in the operating budget, uh, that's big numbers, so I understand why listing it here doesn't hurt anything.
I had similar, I, I think the category has expanded substantially from last year, like there were ten items last year, I don't know how many we have here, probably twenty, twenty-five. One, um, editorial comment, um, we've got a category called Fire Town Trump Line, I think we're talking Fire Tower Trump Line, at least we did last year, call it Fire Tower.
Is it Fire Tower Route?
I think so, that's what, that's what I think.
I think it's very likely to be a typo that I think, so, my apologies.
You know, the thing like the Martin Luther King painting is only twenty thousand dollars, and I think it shows up in John's operating budget.
That's, that was a legacy, actually, of, I never took that out just because I was afraid to. I mean, I didn't, and honestly, I didn't really know what it meant either, whether there was something else that was supposed to be happening there or what, but, we got it in our, at least we had it in our current schedule here of things to pay. So, but I didn't know if there was something different, and each, each budget previous to that, the one that I looked at the first time, the CIP that I looked at the very first time, and, and, so, um, somebody you normally would put it in there, right?
Yeah, yeah. Apparently possible. But actually, the more comprehensive of this, I think it helps us get our arms around which money we, uh, you know, what's our backlog of capital work that we can afford to do, so, yeah. So, some staggering numbers here, we got that all. Again, this is, uh, almost informational, not more extended reading of thirty pounds. So, if more members have no further comments or questions, I guess I'll ask the manager to do, and the clients also, do you have the guidance you need to,
Yeah.
Come back in two weeks, have this counted.
If you guys are itching to get together before that pass, that's fine, but there's no way, no reason for you to do so until the next, uh, before the next meeting.
Is that it all, so, everybody's happy? Well, I withdraw the question. There may have be further comments.
Well done.
Yeah, I agree, good job.
Thank you, thank you very much, and staff, and Nancy, and this is a lot easier and quicker, and of course, I always caution people not to, you never know what kind of surprises we might hitch over between now and June twenty-second, but, they seem to be up there, and thank you guys too, it's a lot easier to deal with the same board, uh, multiple times, uh, on a budget, so, that you guys, I think, now have a handle for what, what's happening with it, and, I don't underestimate the work and the thought you guys put into it as well, and it's definitely some difficult discussion, considering on the utility rate agrees, I can't, you guys are going to have to defend that, we'll lie in a different way, so if you have any questions, or if you want to pass anything along, that's what we're here for, so, uh, so.
Okay.
Read your cell phone number, you can chat a break.
Access fee, when I look back to the budget ordinances, it has not been changed since two thousand twelve, the access.
So that six, six dollars, probably that's a lot of money.
So, that little appreciation. If there being no further business or other questions about the budget, go ahead, motion to adjourn.
Some of?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Right.
See you all in six weeks.